And come to order, we'll recite the pledge allegiance. I want to call, okay, I'm sorry. Okay, call order.
Chulgetsky?
Here.
Watson? McCain?
Here.
Wertz? Hyon?
Here.
Johnson?
Here.
Rust?
Here.
Handfelder?
Here.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
This is time for a public comment. You have your restricted to three minutes and so is anyone wishing to speak tonight?
Good evening. My name is Steve Campbell. I'm a twenty-seven-year employee of Lewis and Clark Community College, an institution which I love. I have served this college in roles as staff, management, and most recently for the past twenty years as a full-time tenured faculty member. My goal tonight is to do what feels like it is impossible. In three minutes' time, I'm hoping to convince you to do something that many others, with much more expertise and eloquence, have been trying to do, I believe, for the past six months. I'm hoping to convince you to hear me. Stephen Covey said in his book, The Seven Habits of Highly Effective People, "Most people do not listen with the intent to understand, they listen with the intent to reply." Tonight, you, the Board of Trustees of this institution, will be presented with data and information about the funding streams that I believe are necessary for this educational entity to operate at the high level of quality that is expected by all of our stakeholders. This data and information will be coming from those who have an ethical responsibility to share real facts and real truths to help you learn what you didn't already know, so that you can make educated and wise decisions about the future operation and growth of Lewis and Clark. Part of the information you have in front of you shows that about forty-three percent of our operating budget goes toward instruction. I understand that these costs include part-time and full-time faculty salaries and benefits, cost for counseling services for our students, program maintenance, budget costs that help pay for supplies and equipment that are specific to our programs study, as well as other things directly related to our ability to provide the quality instruction that our students and their potential employers have come to expect. Many, if not all of us, also rely on robust funding for technology to maintain a cutting-edge level of instruction for our students. I would like for you to seriously consider that any changes or reductions in the revenue streams that fund this college will, in no small part, have an effect on the faculty's ability to effectively do their jobs. I believe that you think you've been making decisions for the past six months that are best for this institution, and I did not come here tonight to judge any of your previous efforts. If you truly came tonight without preconceptions and agendas, then I ask that you open your minds and hearts to the facts, the data, and the truth that is about to be presented. In the few conversations I have had with three of you, I have heard you say that you are good people and churchgoers, so I assume that that also means that you are fellow Christ followers. So I appeal to you in the same way that Jesus appealed to those who came to hear His words. If you have ears to hear, listen. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak?
I'm Diane McDonough. I'm a staff member here at the college. I'll keep this very brief. Just to let you know, we're still waiting for our fair wage. Thank you.
Anyone else wish to speak? If not, we will go to discussion items. A review of fiscal year nineteen audit, pages two through seven.
And while Kevin's getting ready there, Mr. Chairman, I appreciate the board scheduling a special meeting for the purpose of reviewing the audit and current bonding, as well as refinancing and new bond options, budget requirements, including tuition fees, and in addition to district levies. This is an informational meeting for the purpose of framing all of the fiduciary policy decisions the board will be required to vote on, beginning in November the seventh, at the regular scheduled board meeting. So tonight's informational. It seems to me the overarching goal is to find this sort of nexus point between the responsibilities of the taxpayers of our district and the responsibility to the people that rely on this institution, also taxpayers, you know, for their technical skills and for education, and to contribute to the economic well-being of our district. So that's kind of the goal tonight. And with that, let's get started.
Good evening. It's a little louder, I thought. I could go through the whole, so we have one-page document, but I found in the past, the last couple of years, I've always gone through it and had like a five-year summary. Had a five-year summary that you can see kind of what trends are, where you stand this year, and it also, anything that happens in any given year kind of sticks out, and you can point out what those differences are. The first page is just a general audit summary, and these are bullet points. And as I go through some of these bullet points, I'll look back to the other pages where they apply to. First one is, just in general, is a clean opinion, a modified opinion. This is the same opinion you've had for years and years, and we would expect it to be unmodified, and that's the way it's been. There's really nothing big there, because that's kind of what we expect, and our financial statements are always materially correct. Actually, the next two, while they're not often talked about, are just as important. These are the compliance and internal controls related to your federal programs, and more specifically, the student financial aid program, which is very, very big dollars. We didn't have any kind of problems in internal controls, no problems in compliance. I don't know if you've ever seen a compliance document for this, but they are huge. What we have to do, the testing for eligibility, the testing for refunds, testing for disbursements and reporting, there are a lot of interesting things that we have to test for and report on if there's any problems, and they've done a very good job reporting and doing these federal programs. It's very tough. We went to a conference, because they have conferences just for these two financial aid programs. We went to one of these in the past and said, "If you don't find findings, they're amazing." And we tried, and they've done a very good job. And we haven't had very, very few problems of this in the past. So why those two don't really stand out, generally speaking, that is very important. That's big money. The next one kind of goes back to the first. It's, as far as adjustments, we didn't make any adjustments ourselves, which is very good. And that has to play into our review of internal controls also, whereas if we're suggesting adjustments and we feel like the district may not have the knowledge to do it, we haven't had those kind of problems, which...
I don't know where you're at, Kevin. I'm sorry.
I'm on the first page, just going down the bull...
It's in the board book.
It's not in the audit, it's in a five, six-page summary.
Page two of the board book.
I never got any numbers in anyway, so... It's the lead page. Well, it's the lead page of what our summary is.
Page two.
About halfway down. I'm on the closing end of adjustments. I said we didn't make any adjustments ourselves, which kind of leads again to our good internal controls of the college, and also Mary and Nancy and everyone does a very good job. Actually, they make, we wait sometimes on them making adjustments just to fine-tune things down to get it exactly right. So these are the adjustments that are done at the end. So things that we could easily pass on as immaterial-type items, they want to nail down. So that's testament to Mary. After that, I'm going to try to start hitting some of these numbers. The biggest difference in the report by this year, if you had a chance to review the report already, this five-page summary was what they call OPEB balances. And these are for retirement payments. It's actual estimation of future retirement payments that the college is liable for. It's required to be put on your financial statements liability. If you go to page five of my summary...
Page six, I think.
This is statement net position. You can see where there's about three-quarters of a page down, there's accrued OPEB liability. And it's about twenty-three million dollars. This is a new requirement that they call GASB seventy-five that went into place. And this is what's considered to be the college's future possible payment that would be required for actual retiree-type payments for health insurance purposes. This obviously is new this year, but that's a huge effect on what the financial statements look like. It takes your net position from an area of eighty-five million dollars down to about sixty-three million dollars because of this estimate. And they've done this over the past couple of years. They've done this with pension funds. And it doesn't really hit yours, because the state makes your match on pensions, and the district is required to do those. We have to put those as footnotes, but since the district is responsible for some of these payments that are made for retiree insurance, they say that this liability has to be included in your financial statements. So it's a huge number, and it's really a big guess, in which I don't like as an accountant, but it is what it is. So I just want to point that out, because it makes a big difference in your bottom line at the end of the year. Your financial, your net asset net position at the end of this year would have been eighty...
Where does that estimate come from? Somebody official give it to you?
Yes. Yep, there's one of the big firms does the audit on it, and then the actuarial's done off the audit off the pension funding. CMS at the state level provides those allocations, because they allocate for all the junior colleges. It took your, like I said, it took your net position quite a ways down. Had that number not been in there, your net position would have been about eighty-four point nine million dollars, which was compared to last year about eighty-four point five. So you can see what kind of effect it really did to you. Okay, back to the first page. I think another big thing this year is that unrestricted funds had positive balances, had a positive financial year, and that could be better looked at on pages two and three. Primarily two. The current two thousand nineteen year, and these are the unrestricted funds. Two thousand nineteen year had a positive balance of about three hundred fifty-five thousand dollars. Last year was...
Page three in the board book.
Last year was...
His pages are not numbered, so you're going to have to add a page.
Got it.
Okay?
I can add a page. So the previous year was almost break even, you're about thirty-five thousand. But in the year before, it kind of, you were also increased about a hundred thirty-one thousand dollars if you take those bond proceeds out. But then the previous year before that, you can see where they had those hits when the state was cutting back on its funding, where you had some deficits of six hundred, six thousand, three hundred seven thousand, before you turned the corner and started making progressive steps in the right way after that year. So that's very good, again, this year to show positive balances, unrestricted funds. The next line is unrestricted revenues and expenditures are both at the highest level in the five-year period. Again, that's back on page three. Actually, let's go to page four for that, because page three has the on-behalf payments that match for the SURS, and page four does not have that. You can see your revenues have gone from about thirty-one point eight million in two thousand fifteen. It's steadily had increased to where you're at thirty-three point two million in two thousand nineteen. Along those same lines, the expenditures in two thousand fifteen are about thirty-one point five. It did a little bit, again, when the state money has kind of went away from you. And then with twenty-nine million, thirty million, you're now thirty-one point two, thirty-one point seven million dollars this year. The next line is, I kind of said this, the state on-behave contribution. This is the SURS payments that the state makes on your behalf, and they do the same type of calculation, what's done for the retirement-type payments or the retiree insurance-type payments. And they allocate those monies out to each of the colleges, junior colleges. That number can be seen on page three, and again, on page five. If you look about halfway down the page, there's the bottom line of the expenditures and the bottom line of the revenues, there's an on-behave number. And this is the amount that the state is putting in on your behalf. It went from about nine point one million in two thousand fifteen, to eleven million, to fourteen million, to thirteen and a half million. Again, this is an actuarial accounted number. In two thousand nineteen, they required it to be put into restrictive funds. For whatever reason, they decided they wanted it shown there.
I have a question. You said earlier that this mysterious number that we might owe for retirement benefits, is that the liability of the taxpayers in the Lewis and Clark district, or is that a state liability?
The one I'm talking about now, with the on-behave, is a state liability. The one I was talking about previously with the retiree insurance-type payments, that is considered to be the district's share of possible future liability.
Future, okay.
It's an actuarial calculation of what they expect you to pay over time. But it's supposed to be present valued down to today's terms.
Okay, but it's not a liability now, but it's a future possible liability.
It's a future estimated liability, yes. And it's going to change from year to year, just depending what their actuarials come up with. But that, back to the on-behave, if you, on page five, you can see this year where we had to put it in restricted, because ICCB said they wanted it in restricted funds to the unrestricted. That number's grown to about fourteen point eight million dollars from thirteen point five in the previous year. And again, this is strictly an actuarial calculation they do every year, depending on the retirees, the interest rates, the return on investments. There's a lot of numbers going into this, but this is what they're putting in on your behalf. Next line is, and this is important, the state grant increase beginning this year. It's back to exceeding two thousand fifteen level. This is on page three, what's going to be on three and four. But it was the state grants that went back in two thousand fifteen, about six point one million dollars. And you can see in two thousand sixteen, where it took that big drop, it went to three point three million. Then it slowly come back up to where finally, back in two thousand nineteen, we're exceeding that level. And that's, that was a big hit in those years when that funding was halted and put a strain. But now, at least we've got those levels back up, so that's a big number, and it has been steadily increasing. Even though in this two thousand nineteen, this next line, I have two thousand nineteen, eighteen year report lowest spending in a five-year period, this includes restricted and unrestricted monies. So I just went up above and said, well, unrestricted had the highest in five years. But now, this is combined. That's kind of just the state spending, the state grant-type spending, the federal funds-type spending. If you would add the unrestricted funds and restrictive funds and take off those on-behave payments, because they're really not your expenses, you're at the lowest levels of what you've been in five years, in these last two years out of the previous five. So I've been able to maintain operations. You have been able to hold the spending overall down. And lastly, the last page, which would be page seven, I believe, for you guys. This is the debt summary for the last five years. It went from two thousand fifteen, you're at a hundred, a hundred twenty-five million. Then you went to one twenty-five again, almost one twenty-six, at one thirty-three. In the last couple of years, then it steadily dropped. You had some, I think, eight point some million dollars last year to pay it down, so... While it's still a pretty hefty number, there has been strides made, at least the last couple of years, to really get into this debt balances. I mean, overall, from what we look at, internal control-wise and operations-wise, it was, we have, you know, we have very little problems at all. Mary does an excellent job for us. As far as financial, it's nice to come in the year, it's not like they made a, you guys made a bunch of money this year, but you were able to at least come out on the positive side in unrestricted funds. And that's a, that's a very, very good thing. You're talking about a lot of dollars going in and out, and to be able to bring that down and balance it and to have a little bit of excess is a really good thing. At the same time, you dropped your debt considerably, so I think you had to be pretty happy this year.
I have a question. Once upon a time, you told me about a de-feased debt we have. You used the term de-feased. Is that included in the two thousand nineteen?
If it's de-feased, it's considered not on your books.
I know it's, I know that, but what is that number? I haven't seen it in there. You know?
I would have to add a number up in our report, because it's, it's technically, I guess, it's still your debt, but it's not, it's in an escrow account that's been put away through defeasings.
So that one fourteen not include defeased?
It would not have any de-feased funds in it. I'd have to go back and add up still and see what's in there. And a lot of those have been paid off, but I know there are some still out there. But all these would be reported the same way. Every year would have it. That defeasement would not be included in these numbers.
Do you have the premium on the bonds? Are they included in that number?
I don't believe they're included in that number. I'll check.
They're not included in your schedule?
They're not?
No.
On page twenty-three of the regular audit, the premiums show in there. Yes, of bound on page twenty-three.
So that would mean that we're a hundred and twenty-one million in debt, correct, with the premiums added in?
The premiums aren't really debt. That was money that was, has to be amortized over time in accordance with county principles. That money was forwarded to you in excess of what the bond proceeds were to you, and it gets amortized off. The bonds are sold at a premium. We don't make the rules.
You could give a concrete example.
I could, or Tom could. It's Tom's thing, so... It's whenever you have market rates, generally speaking, and if they have a stated rate on these bonds, if the market rate is worse than the stated rate, I might have this backwards, you get paid a premium with those bonds that get sold, because you're not at the same levels with stated rates, which you could earn on the open market on investments. So this is the difference in making those up. So because they amortize it over time, try to get those back down to an even number. It's just an accounting type thing.
Let me give it a try, and I want to see if I understand it. So let's see, the par value of the bonds was a thousand dollars, and that was at five percent. And the market rate was only four percent. So the bond purchaser would then look at that and say, gee, I like that bond. I'll pay one thousand and fifty dollars for that bond. And so that fifty dollars is the premium. We don't actually owe it to anybody. We only owe the thousand dollars to the bondholder.
Exactly.
That's correct, and the excess amount that's paid is just the present value of the future interest that you will pay out over time to make that equation whole. So you stated it exactly correct.
See, on page fifty-six, one of the things you have to audit is enrollment?
Yes.
So what do you do to verify that?
We have to look at generally class list, make sure that the hours are being reported correctly, that if someone retook a class for any reason, that they're, depending on their grades, whether it can be counted for apportionment or not, just that's mostly the big thing. Make sure these classes are approved for apportionment.
Do they include employees?
We take a random sample. I'm not sure if employees are in that number or not. I would think it's in, Mary, you're probably on the thousand.
I believe that they would be on the apportionment report.
I would think so.
I don't know why they wouldn't be.
What we do is take completely at random, take classes completely at random, take kids out of those classes completely at random.
So you do a random sample to just verify that they're all being, they're being treated correctly?
Right, being reported correctly.
To be claimed for apportionment, and this isn't really my area either, but you have to be present in the class at a certain point in time. The course has to be funded with non-restricted dollars. You know, there's a formula, and then those hours are funded. But you can put employees in there, you think? If they're credit hour courses, yes. I mean, it really is not about, other than enrollment, it's not about the enrolling themselves as much as whether the course counts and whether they're an in-district student versus an out-of-district student. I'm not sure what would exclude an employee from the list.
Are dual credits included in that?
I was wondering, I was wondering how those were handled?
I think they're probably in there too, as long as you're getting the credit for both areas, yes.
Right, when we certify hours, dual credits.
Right, because they're on the bottom of...
And you get a different rate for that.
On page fifty-six, yeah.
So, okay, I guess like a dual-credit hour that is in the classroom in a high school, is that equal to an hour here?
If it's one-credit hour, yes. A credit hour equals a credit hour.
Credit hour is a credit hour.
A credit hour is a credit hour. And when it comes to the funding formula, it's going to be backaloried at one rate, business occupational at another rate, and it's going to be against those credit hours, so it doesn't matter where they sourced.
It won't be a different rate?
It won't be, you get the same rate from the state, whether it's a dual-credit or a regular credit?
As long as it's the same type course.
Well, I guess, I didn't, I don't think I heard Julie's question right.
I thought that you got a lower rate from the state for...
When you mean rate, you mean the money that we get from the state?
A portion.
Yeah, we don't get any, we don't get anywhere near as much money for dual-credit students.
A portion would be the same.
Do we?
The portion would be the same, but we don't get tuition.
So what, what's it called that is different? What's the proper title for, you know, you said we get fees for dual-credit classes that are like a third? It's a credit hour funding rate that feeds into the base operating grant that we receive from the state, which is a grant but not a grant. Credit hour funding rate.
It's different by the type of course it is. They reimburse it differently. They're all different.
Different categories. Thanks, because we need to know the terminology. I don't really know what to ask. I went through all of this, and it, you know, looks all pretty typical. The only weird thing were the pension liabilities. It just make the bottom lines look bad.
Yes, it does. But everybody's subject to the same thing. And you're seeing it in cities and villages with fire and police pension funds, where the unfunded liabilities are so big, and it's just making everybody's unrestricted balances huge negative numbers. And there's no capital to offset it. It's not like you can go out and issue a bond issue and build a building. At least you have the building with these. You don't have anything. It's just a negative capital. And our estimates, to make it worse.
So are we talking about the OPEB?
Yes.
So what are other entities doing about that? Nothing?
Pay, I mean, they're paying what the state's telling them to pay.
Well, which is that fifty basis points for the employee and fifty basis points for the employer, or?
Right. And let's say adjust that at some point in the future. Because you see other retirement funds, for example, IRMRF, which is a matching, and it's in most school districts, most villages, all cities. They have a rate that the employer has to pay, in addition to what the employee puts in, and they bounce that rate, depending on how the funding has gone in last year. If you're exceeding what the expected interest rate would be, for example, or you're exceeding the life expectancy, which is not good. But it's a case where you wouldn't owe us quite as much, and this all comes back through an actuarial formula, back and it's discounted, back to the current day's expenses. So it's a huge estimate, and the only way to get it back through the state is to change those rates, which they may be charged in the district. That'd be the way they'd catch that twenty-two million back. I don't see them coming back and saying, "You need to write me a check for twenty-three million dollars." That's not going to happen.
Somebody's going to have to write a check.
Is that, is their estimate based on the actual people that worked here, or is it just...
They do an allocation for each, if you, there's a grid that has listed all the junior colleges, and it has all their different allocations, the mouse app, where they have deferrals and deferred inflows and deferred outflows that go with this. It's all broken down by each of the schools. It's based on participation.
And it's based on the actual people's salaries that work here? Or is it an estimation?
It would, it should be on salary. It should be on people using the benefit, basically. It's not like a pension where it would be based on potential future salaries, like for a real pension. This is a retiring benefit... This is a retiree benefit, which is health insurance.
Uh, do, uh, does the college have any control over, uh, the, the OPEB? I mean, that, isn't that set by the state?
Yes.
What the, what, what benefits are gonna be provided to retirees? We're not talking about pension, we're talking about mainly medical, medical insurance.
Right, that's set by the state.
It's set by the state, but it's gonna be paid by the District 536 taxpayers and tuition, and I guess that's it? Isn't there any, uh, I mean, I know this is a brand-new thing, but I'm wondering if there are any, any entities that are, that are looking at that and, looking at that and trying to start putting money aside? Because fifty basis points is gonna, never, doesn't even come close to covering the cost.
The ones that we see have not, it's always been pay-as-you-go. It's always just pay your health insurance as you go, and, uh, I have not seen anyone put any kind of money away for this. Because we see in quite a few cities and quite a few other schools too, and no one's done anything to try to offset this liability.
So, we have retirees, Lewis and Clark has retirees. What, what was, what was the, uh, I don't, I don't, not necessarily saying that you're gonna have the answer, but what was the, uh, the invoice that we got from the State of Illinois to cover that liability, to cover those retiree payments for OPEB?
I'm not sure I understand your question. Was the invoice that you received?
Yeah.
You would have received the invoice for this number. This is an actual calculation that the state ICCP provides to you to include, they say required, to include your audit.
But it's, and that's recorded as a liability, right?
Yes.
And a liability has to be paid at some point. And we are already paying retirees their, for their, uh, insurance, somebody is. So I'm wondering how, how does that work, how does that work?
I'm not sure I understand your question.
If we have a retiree, somebody retired from Lewis and Clark, okay, and they're receiving medical coverage as one of their benefits of, as a, as a retiree?
Through the state?
Yes, through the state, yeah. And so, so the state's paying that money out, they're paying for their coverage. I don't know if they're self-insured, I'm sure they're self-insured. But if they're, if they're making us record a liability, isn't that saying that we're liable to pay that?
At some point in the future, over time, I, I don't know how they're gonna.
But we don't get billed for it, the only billing that we.
If they did this to every school district in the whole state, everybody'd be broke. There, I don't see them having the ability to go out and say, if you owe this twenty-three million there right now, subscribe to a check.
So the only, the only quote-unquote billing that we have right now is the fifty basis points for the employer, and fifty basis point from the employee that's going to the, that's going to the state, yeah.
And next year they could come up and run this calculation, it could be two million dollars lower. I've seen huge fluctuations in these, just the pension funds, but we're seeing, not here necessarily, but other places, we're seeing it all over the place. So one of the biggest numbers in your reports, a big estimate that they change every year. And I have to try to explain this to people, and it makes no sense, makes no sense to me usually. I mean, I understand the purpose behind it, but I don't see how they could do these huge swings to make it look like you owe these big monies, but it's a big ballpark number, especially in the governmental unit. And this is the way, this is the same type of reasoning why a lot of people went away from defined benefit plans in private companies and went to 401Ks. Because these numbers were just huge, and they had to book these numbers, and it was hitting their bottom line, it was hitting taxpayers, it was hitting stockholders. So they went away from that, went to 401K plan, so they could kinda see where their expenses are gonna be, because they knew what the defined contribution was gonna be in that instance. That's why so many people's gone away from defined benefit plans. I don't know if that answered your question, it's.
Well, if, if the question was, what are we paying now, it's half a percent. But I think Kevin knows that. That won't, liability.
It's, it's, it seems to me like, what, what I have read is that the State of Illinois has, has considered, or some, you know, some of the, uh, their economists or whatever said, well, that's, way we can solve this unfunded pension debt was, we'll just force it back to the municipalities and the colleges that incurred that, and the, and the school districts. This appears to be the first step towards making people aware of what the unfunded liability is. This is what this is, is an unfunded liability.
Yeah, I, I agree with your saying there, but, uh, this was brought on by GASB, which is Governmental Accounting Standards Board, and not necessarily by State Illinois. When GASB's passed this, the state just required to follow it, and that's why they gave, they did this calculation, give the information, because GASB, which is a national organization, it's the government part of FASB, makes these rules, and they gotta follow them.
Yeah, um, I was looking at page eight of your audit report. And, uh, now at the bottom there, it talks about the, uh, "In past years, the on-behalf pension contribution was presented in the instruction category. In fiscal year 2019, the amount is being recorded in all categories, which is reflected above." Why didn't you restate 2018? Is that, is there some prohibition to that, or? I mean, I would've been an extra worker, of course, I understand that, work for, for Mary, I suppose, but.
Right.
You know, the, the way it's done right now, they're not, 2018 and 2019 are not comparable.
Right, in the, in the, yes. That's why I kinda, now one page in mine, I separated, put it so you could see the comparison between them, put out that on behalf. That's why I.
No, no, I'm not talking about the spread. In, in past, the, the, in past years, it was presented as an instruction category only?
Correct.
And it, and this year it's being spread amongst the other categories, for example, uh, well, I don't know, student services, public service, operational maintenance, et cetera.
Right.
Yeah.
Yeah, that could've been, where it could've been allocated in the past year. We just don't wanna change, if you change, start changing numbers of previous years, and you start losing validity of numbers, I hate to change a number that's reported previously for something like this.
Okay. On to page fifteen of the audit report. This is note, note number one, the, in the, under paragraph A, it says, "The accompanying financial statements include all entities for which the Board of Trustees of the College has financial accountability." Could you, uh, explain how we have financial accountability for the foundation? We know nothing about them.
Okay, this is another GASB. Um, they, you would ask if the foundation is for the primary purpose of funding the college, that it needs to be shown as discreetly presented in the component unit. It's just their rules. The primary funding of their purposes for the college, so you want it in there.
Well, that, that's not what it says, though. It says that we have financial accountability. I mean, I, I, I guess maybe that's what I don't understand, what the definition of that, of that phrase is, financial accountability.
I mean, should the Board of Trustees be looking at the, all the numbers from the foundation?
I think, well, the foundation has their own board, but the purpose.
But this says the Board of Trustees.
That could've probably been worded a little bit differently. That's pretty standard wording for any kind of component.
Yeah, the, I mean, the foundation has its own Board of, Board of Trustees, or whatever they're called, Board of Directors.
Right.
I mean, they're really responsible for the financial accountability, not us, unless we start getting reports.
True. It's like you probably had it in the period differently. Again, this is kinda boilerplate type language for all component units.
Um, on page twenty-seven of the report, there's a statement there in the second paragraph on that page. It talks about, um, penalties, um, talks about, uh, there's a, a penalty for, um, effective no attendance exceeding six percent during the final rate of earnings period. And, which, I understand that, that concept, of course, but, uh, there was a bit of a surprise to me that it says that in SUNDR section fifteen, relating to contributions payable due to earnings exceeding the salary set for the governor. Do we have, I mean, I know, we have, some employees are exceeding the governor, right? I mean, it, because that's part of, seems like that'll be part of the, uh, part of the disclosure there is what our, what our penalty was, and, and, no?
No, this is a, S U R S provides this, and they do all the calculations related to this. This is straight out of S U R S's required footnote disclosure. So it's just their wording.
Do you know what the governor makes?
No, I don't.
I do.
Yes?
One hundred and seventy-seven-five.
Hey, that's what I thought. Do you know how many people exceed that?
I do.
Yeah, how many?
Three.
Three?
Do we pay a penalty on that?
I don't know.
I'm sorry.
Will we be paying a penalty on that evidently?
We are required to pay a penalty on that, yes. We are required to pay a penalty, yes.
Is that, is that paid on an ongoing basis, or is it just when they retire?
They bill us each year.
Each year, okay.
So actually, I believe the payment went out in October business, so you will see it at the next board meeting. But they actually do not, um, provide us with that calculation, um, very early. It's usually towards the end of the audit, so we do our own estimation and, um, and book it based on that.
Did you say, um, pertains to three employees, is that right?
Employees, and there are some modifications that occur to that if they're paid through grants that is subtracted off. I mean, it's, there's some adjustments because the match is provided through the grant.
Oh, okay, so if they're. Are any of these three employees paid through a grant?
Yes.
Yeah, I, I'd like to see a list of all those, those three employees. I mean, I should be able to figure it out right from the ICCP report, but just seems like there's a lot more than three, but.
It's not more than three, not more than three by our calculation, and not more than three by S U R S's calculations.
Yeah, their, their calculation isn't exactly, is probably obscure. I mean, it's, it's not like a straightforward calculator.
I think it's likely based on the academic year, I'd have to pull and see, but the academic year runs different from the fiscal year.
Okay, I wouldn't see that, how relevant that would be.
Uh, because we receive increases partly through the academic year, so it does play into it. You have so many months at one rate and so many months at another rate.
Okay.
Because we're balancing it to the penny.
Do we have, um, I think we try to stay away from it. Do we have any people that are, um, incurring the penalty under the six percent rule?
We do everything we can to avoid that.
Yeah.
Can it happen? Yes.
Sure.
Has it happened? Yes, I'm trying to think when we last processed one.
But it's, it's minimal.
Time to full time is what usually catches us.
The intent is to avoid it, is to avoid it, yeah, once in a while it happens, but it's just inadvertent, yeah.
Right, right. We do what we can to reduce or eliminate that.
I have no further questions, Your Honor.
Mr. Chairman, I would like for one commend Mary and her staff on the outcome of this audit. Joffe Will Dunn.
Yeah, I'll point out it takes a campus-wide effort to do that, a college-wide effort to do that, so it's codependent in all the units of the college, and Mary did a great job concentrating on all that, but everybody's involved.
I have a question in your audit, you said eleven million of new money. What new money?
Eleven million new money. Word I said.
It'll be under Stiefel, I thought it was under the audit.
I'm gonna round applause for the audit. That was the good news.
Yeah, are you next then, Dale?
Well, no, I think that we're gonna move right into the auditing, as we'll ask, uh, Angelique and Tom to step forward.
Same information, just wanna make sure you have all the same thing, and I like.
It's the same as what's in the board report, right?
Yeah, and I like to use colors as a reference, I don't wanna have anything in black and white obscuries. I just wanna make double issue.
All right, well, good evening, appreciate the opportunity to be here again. My name is Tom Crabtree with Stiefel Nicholas, and alongside me is Angelique Vich from Chapman &amp; Cutler. This is an educational discussion, it's, uh, a discussion about the future, the opportunities, the current state of affairs, and I wanna emphasize that, uh, if there's any questions along the way, that's the purpose of tonight's event, is so that we can learn and discuss and create a path forward that, uh, we can implement the view of the board and the administration. So we'll, uh, start with the handout, and the good, the good news is, this is all information I think that you've seen before. It's information that is a look at where we stand today, and it's, uh, a very few options of what we could consider, uh, simply for the purpose of framing our discussion and giving you the opportunity to, uh, look and ask and discuss and decide, uh, what the, the future holds. So pages, um, one through, oh, yes, of course. Pages one through four simply outline the existing debt issues that the college has currently. I think the salient features that we look at whenever we discuss, uh, current debt or the potential for future debt is where we stand today, both in our principal payments, where those payments are, how they align to each other, and more importantly, what the call features are that you have available to you. Those call features are very important because they give you two particular functions. One, they give the opportunity for the potential for refinancing at a savings, at an interest rate savings, and we're fortunate enough to have that opportunity to discuss tonight. Additionally, they also provide a flex point for the board and the administration to look at the existing debt payments and plan for the future to see what other issues and capital plans for the district, how those, uh, plans fold into the existing debt. So those are the main focuses that we're gonna look at tonight. So when we're looking at the first four pages, as I mentioned, we're looking at the principal, we're looking at an eye to those interest rates, so we can gauge where we might be on a potential savings. But most importantly, at the bottom of each one of these columns, you'll notice a row labeled, "Next Call." So, our municipal debt behaves very similar to our mortgage at home. Uh, we borrow a lump sum today and pay it back over time. Unlike a mortgage, uh, these are securities, just like IBM or Apple issues debt. These come with the same type of investors, uh, the same weight of importance and regulation. The investors that provide their funds when they purchase the securities have become a. accustomed in the municipal industry to having essentially a lockout period. So it would be nice if the college were to win the lottery and be able to pay off all of your debt. However, that doesn't often happen. But unlike a mortgage where you could pay off the debt at any time, municipal debt comes with a call feature, an optional call feature that can be utilized for those two stated purposes typically, one to restructure debt, or two to refinance debt for savings. So we look at that call line, that row labeled "Next Call" to identify when those flex points are, when that next call feature is coming up. Since nineteen eighty-seven to two thousand and seventeen, we could look at those call dates, and we could actually refinance in advance of that call date one time according to federal law. Unfortunately, as a surprise to our industry, in December of two thousand and seventeen, that one opportunity to refinance in advance of the call date at a tax advantage rate, a lower interest rate, was taken away from us. I could give you an opinion on that, but that's just the facts that we have to deal with. So that simply means that we are now even more focused on when those dates occur and when those flex points occur throughout your debt payments. We do have a small window. When looking at these call option dates, we have up to three months before that call date to actually complete a financing, so slightly in advance of that call date, but a very small window. So in looking at your debt over the next few pages, the two thousand and ten B, C on the first page, and then the two thousand and twelve on the second page, all have call dates that we are essentially, for practical purposes, within the window of considering a refinancing. So that gives us the opportunity for a discussion to refinance for savings and/or to restructure those payments if we so desire. Any, any questions on the outstanding debt or some of the items that we look at when we're considering the existing debt?
You had one excluded from the debt limit. Is that the defeased? Is that what we're talking about there excluded from?
No. So, so just to reference the defeased debt, so defeased debt typically occurs when, in a refinancing situation. So previously, as I mentioned, before two thousand and seventeen, it was very common when interest rates had fallen or for other reasons, to refinance in advance of that call date. So what occurs if you are significantly in advance of that call date, say several years, you issue a new bond that then becomes the liability of the district. You take the proceeds from that new bond, and then you place them into an escrow account, and that escrow account's sole purpose is to pay the old bond issue until the call date approaches. So it's literally a corpus of funds that are invested to service the old debt. So when that occurs, and that escrow is deemed by a third party to be sufficient to completely service that old debt, that old debt can be legally considered defeased. It is no longer an obligation of the district. So because it is no longer a legal obligation of the district, that's why it's not referenced in the audit. It's really not your debt anymore. It's the debt of that escrow account of the corpus of, of funds. The, and, so we have, the defeasance isn't really referenced, but the specific issue that you saw with the red lettering is an alternate revenue bond issue, which is, under, under state law, not to tread on Angelique's toes too closely here, but in layman's terms, under state law, when we issue debt, we have to pick a type of bond that state law provides, and then we follow the guidelines for that type of bond as it pertains, we pick the right bond for the right type of project. So in that case, and in the case of an alternate revenue bond, we were able to identify an alternate revenue source to pay those bonds, and that was the Public Health Safety Fund. So because we were able to identify a separate revenue source that is not the general property tax bond and interest levy, that is legally, by state law, not part of the legal debt limit calculation, because it's not directly paid by the property taxpayer through the bond and interest levy, but through a separate, separate revenue source, the PHS levy. So that has its own dedicated revenue stream. So that is why it's not considered part of the legal debt limit calculation. Does that answer your question? Any other thoughts on the outstanding debt before we talk about potential options?
You were talking about the, the call provision, that you can, we can, we have three months, we have to, have to do it three months before? So, I mean, I guess I'm looking at the one that says the call date is one-one-twenty-twenty. Is that, is that the three months before date, or is that the actual date?
Right. So the, the dates we have listed are the actual date, the first date that you can legally refinance on that date. You can close a financing on that date and still take advantage of tax-exempt the lower rates. So three months before that is when we could first close a bond issue and still be within that three-month window. So in that case, we're already within the three-month window. So, and the window is just a hurdle that we have to get to, so we're there. So now we have the opportunity from this day forward to take advantage of that refinancing without that, that federal penalty of a higher interest rate. In the example of some of those other issues, you saw they were, May one was the call date. So that's why, for instance, I still say we're practically speaking within the window, because if the board tonight were to say, "Go forth and refinance," we would still take some time to effectuate that sale, and it, we would work towards closing it on two-one, effectively three months before that call date. So that's why I say we're essentially in the window of both of those opportunities.
So are you saying you can do it after the three months, but not before?
That's exactly right.
Okay, so anytime after that.
That's right. It just opens the opportunity.
Okay, so, so what happens on January second, two thousand and twenty, if we haven't done anything? What, 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 what options do we have?
So your, your options haven't changed. You're just within the period that you can refinance. I will say that when we have a situation, mathematically speaking, that you have the opportunity to refinance at a, at a savings, at a lower interest rate, and if you wait past that date, we call that a wasting asset, because you, every day that you don't refinance, you're paying more in interest than you could have been paying had you refinanced.
Anything, Angelique, you want to?
I think Tom is doing a great job so far.
Thank you, Angelique.
Keep him honest.
That's right. So we also, at the end of the outstanding debt table, we've provided, very similar to what you have in the audit and you've seen before, a table simply showing the state calculation, the state-provided calculation of your debt limit, and how your current debt compares to that debt limitation. Given the current EAV of the district and the allowable two-point-eight-seven-five percent as the debt limit calculation, you currently, as we sit here today, have outstanding a little over a hundred and eight million of debt, leaving you a debt capacity currently of just under sixteen million, fifteen-point-seven. Where, because we're so close to November first, which is a significant payment date for the college, we've also provided information that once we cross the November first deadline, when the next significant chunk of payments will be made in just a few weeks, we'll be down to an outstanding debt figure of a little over a hundred and three million, increasing that capacity to twenty million. All right, so now that we've sort of looked at the current state of affair, yes?
I did have a quick, quick question, a little, little picky question on that particular schedule.
Of course.
There's a, there's an asterisk behind the twenty eighteen, the second twenty eighteen?
Yes.
What does that refer to?
Just for fun, I'll let Angelique answer that one. It's not definitely...
So the, excuse me, the difference between the two numbers shown for the levy year twenty eighteen is essentially the EAV with and without, and the TIF valuation for Madison County. So if you look at the bottom number that is larger, that does include the TIF value for TIF districts in Madison County. For purposes of the debt limit, you are allowed to include the TIF values in the EAV when applying the two-point-eight-seven-five percent limitation to get to the dollar amount. So, and that is why you will see that in Tom's debt capacity calculation, he used the higher number, the four million, three-twenty-one.
Just prescribed by, just using the calculation prescribed by state law. So, so now that we have an understanding of the current debt picture of the district, we know that we have some opportunities for discussion for structure of debt, rearranging debt, folding in new debt, taking advantage of refinancing to save interest. It obviously lends into the discussion of what do we choose to do at this point. This also happens to align with sort of the long-term plan that the college has put in place. We've typically been on a cycle of every four to five years utilizing funding bonds to provide additional revenue for tech funds primarily, and so that is also part of the previous conversation that has gone on over the last, well, five to ten years, because that's been an ongoing plan. So that's part of the discussion that we have in here, so refinancing and potential for new money, which is an open-ended question. So we've provided, again, just a sort of letter summary statement, I think you've, you know, seen this before, just with some updated figures. It's the same information, but just with today's rates essentially. What we wanted to outline for you is the opportunity, first of all, to potentially refinance those two thousand and ten bonds. Those two thousand and ten bonds are particularly unique because they took advantage of a federal program called the Build America Bond Program. At the time, it was, and it, and it still is generally, a wonderful opportunity for any governmental entity to issue debt and receive a federal subsidy to pay part of the interest for that debt. So the federal government, to spur growth, encouraged essentially a lower interest rate by providing a federal subsidy. So that was a good opportunity that fit within financing that was occurring at that time, and it just simply provided for a lower cost of financing. Today, we find ourselves with the opportunity to refinance, simply because rates have continued to fall essentially for the last forty years, but particularly since two thousand and ten. We've also moved down the yield curve, so what used to be a twenty-year bond is now only a ten-year bond. So we get to refinance the same length of debt at a lower interest rate. The interesting part of the Build America Bonds, as we call them BABS, is twofold. First of all, they come with that federal subsidy, and in this case, the federal subsidy has actually been applied to operational benefit. So if we were to refinance away from the Build America Bond Program, we could create additional savings in addition to the regular savings that we would see from the interest rate, and we'll look at that a little bit more. But it's a multifaceted discussion when we talk about BABS. So when we look at the summary table at the bottom of that first page, we're talking about two issues combined together, the two thousand and ten B and C, for approximately just under twenty-one million, twenty-point-nine-seven-five million. And we can, at today's estimates, you'll probably hear me say many times today, there's lots of information in here that is based on assumptions and variables, because we've taken a snapshot look at what, one way that we could consider refinancing under various assumptions, not to mention the most important of which is, of course, interest rates. I would like to know, like to be able to say that I know what interest rates are going to do in the future, but I can't even tell you what they'll do tomorrow. So we've taken a look at what we think we would be at, generally speaking, today, and if there's no change, that would be what we generally expect whenever this refinancing were to occur. But obviously, interest rates will change over time, and so we have to be aware of that. But given what we know today, at the bottom of that table, you can see we would produce over a million dollars in cumulative savings, that's savings of interest that we would have paid over time. Of course, in our math world, we like to think of today's dollars, because even though that million dollars is great, a dollar ten years from now is not worth what it's worth today. So we take the present value of that to be a little more apples to apples. So you'll see the darker blue, second to bottom row, labeled net present value savings. The present value of that cash flow stream is a million, thirty thousand. For reference point, that creates a savings of about four-point-six-eight percent of the par amount that's refinanced. So when we talk about how much savings we achieve in relationship to the amount of bonds that we refinanced, that ratio is the savings percentage. The industry standard is that if we were in an advanced refunding situation, we'd want to be at least two to three percent savings target to show that we, and that's, of course, after costs, that's net of, of everything. But we want to be at two to three percent. As you can see, we're at four-point-six-eight percent as we sit today, just on a nominal basis, a well pass of the industry standard. But as I mentioned earlier, since we are essentially at the point where we talked about if we move past January one, no, even if rates stay the exact same, that savings number will continue to go down because we've lost days where we would have saved. So hence the, the wasting asset idea. So anytime we're in a current call period and there's any type of positive savings after cost, essentially, there's no reason not to take advantage of that unless you think interest rates are going to continue to go further down, or we want to preserve that flex point to rearrange debt for another reason later on in the future.
So we would issue new bonds to replace these, and they would have a future callable date? So we are locking ourselves in, right?
Right, so typically, right...
So if interest rates do go down, we're stuck with those bonds for how, maybe ten years or whatever?
Right. So as I mentioned, typically, that lockout period is about ten years. Because of, particularly because of that change in the federal tax law, we've seen the choice for that ten-year feature, and that's completely your choosing to decrease that number. As you decrease the length of that call feature, so instead of maybe a ten-year, you choose a nine-year and eight-year, of course, that's going to affect your interest rates.
Right, more expensive than...
More expensive. The interesting mathematical equation that occurs there is that all you're doing by shortening that call is you're essentially betting that amount that you wouldn't save today on a future refinancing.
Yeah.
So you would theoretically get it back at that time... So you would theoretically get it back at that time, assuming interest rates stay approximately the same as we march down the yield curve. But that would just be really the choice of the district if, you know, take advantage of savings today or you think savings are better tomorrow despite, you know, giving up the savings that we could have had today. So there's that balancing act.
And also, the percentage savings probably doesn't consider fees we have to pay, does it?
Yes, that's after fees, yeah.
Okay, all right.
Correct.
And Tom, the savings is over a period of time?
Correct, so the savings, as I mentioned, the cumulative savings, the million six, million oh six figure is the actual dollars added up over time. But when we present value that back, that's the slightly lower number at a million oh three. So moving on to the next page, page two, as I mentioned, not only do we recognize savings through interest rate savings of that million-dollar figure, but we also have the federal subsidy to consider because this is part of the Build America Bond Program. As part of the Build America Bond Program, every six months, when there's an interest payment due, there's a small window where you have to apply for those subsidy funds. So there is somewhat of a risk associated with trying to apply for those funds, and if you miss that window, you know, there's just a risk because you have to submit that form every six months. So given the fact that we have the opportunity to refinance at lower rates, remove ourselves from the risk of that program, adding that that program has been prorated since it was originally offered, so they offered a certain subsidy rate, and since the federal government has decreased the amount of that subsidy over time, so it's not as good of a deal as it was nine years ago, that's sort of an additional benefit of removing yourself from that program.
So you're saying there's some likelihood that, you know, we've gone from thirty-five percent down to, what, thirty-two point?
Right.
Nine five, three five percent, it could go even lower.
Right, that's right. So in this, go ahead.
Well, is that, so that sequestration, sequestration rate, that's the actual interest rate we're paying then?
The sequestration, the sequester is the federal government's term for prorating. So they simply decreased, they were to give you thirty-five percent of your interest payment, and they have since decreased that amount, and they're not paying a full thirty-five percent anymore.
Yeah, it doesn't add up to thirty-five percent for some reason.
Okay, so I just wonder what our actual interest rate is that we're paying on these bonds? Is that considered in the savings?
Right, so your interest rate, I don't know if we illustrated what the prior rate was, but...
Is that rate after we get money from the federal government or before?
So it is actually, well, it's different in this case because, and that's part of sort of part two, so removing ourselves from the federal program is potentially a benefit.
Right, I understand there's a risk there that that benefit could go away.
Right, and then secondarily, the interest rate that the college is paying is actually the full amount. The subsidy is being used towards operation, the operational budget. So as we discussed last time, if we remove ourselves from the program, that also means that the taxpayers would receive an additional two point eight million dollars of savings because the taxpayers were paying that higher interest rate. They were essentially paying that subsidy amount. And so, so they would recognize that additional two point eight of savings.
When you say taxpayers, you mean like federal taxpayers?
No, the, no, the college is taxpayers, yeah. Right.
So I mean, let me, just to see, confirm my understanding. So the tax levy is based on the...
Full rate.
On the rate before subsidy.
Correct.
But we actually get a subsidy, which can, helps our operating budget, but the taxpayer is paying this high, at the, at this higher rate. If we refinance and we don't have that sequestration or, well, I'm not, whatever, then it's not, they get a lower, the levy gets lowered.
That's exactly right.
Yeah, okay.
Right, so they get the million dollars from interest benefit, and the taxpayer gets the benefit from two point eight million from the subsidy.
What's that call in our operating budget? What's the title of that line item?
It's the federal revenue that goes into Fund Two is the rebate amount.
Okay, I just wonder what was actually called?
It's a federal, federal revenue source.
Okay.
It's in the neighborhood of four hundred thousand.
Four and thirteen thousand.
And it's the only federal source that feeds into our operating budget.
Sure. So then in addition, we also have the window essentially open for the Series two thousand and twelve bonds to look at refinancing. These are not a part of the BAB program, so it's the more straightforward, traditional approach of simply looking at higher interest rates paid versus the lower interest rates that are currently available. That produces, again, a little over a million dollars in cumulative or just nominal interest rate saving, interest payment savings over time. But again, our standard way of looking at it, that produces eight hundred and seventy-four thousand of net present value, so apples to apples comparison. And again, this is an even higher percentage savings at seven point four percent, you know, given today's interest rates and all the assumptions that go along with that, so.
And the industry standard would still be two to three percent?
Correct, yeah, same. And again, you could almost argue that because this is a current call, that industry standard should really be zero because if it saves anything, it's worth doing. Otherwise, you're just paying more for another reason, such as preserving your call for future flexibility or some other reason. But mathematically speaking, if it has any savings, there would be no mathematical reason not to take advantage of it.
Well, but you still have to pay for the issuance costs, so it seemed like there would be some, you know, you gotta be, there gotta be enough savings to cover, at least to cover the issuance costs to break even.
Right, and that, and that zero, anything, that's after the cost. These figures are always after the cost, so, yes, you're exactly right, yes.
What, I'm a little confused on the net present value. I mean, up in the, up in the narrative up there, it says the net present value is a million oh twenty-seven, but then down below, it says it calls it the cumulative savings, and then below it says the net present value of savings is eight seventy-four.
Yeah, I apologize, that must clearly be a typo in the paragraph.
Okay.
So then, as I stated sort of at the beginning, the call feature provides the opportunity for discussion for flexibility as much as it provides for refinancing for savings. So the second part of our discussion tonight is not only do we have the opportunity to refinance for savings, but we have the opportunity to discuss and plan for the future debt payments and debt structure of the district, particularly with regard to this issue. We can obviously change those payments to whatever format the district finds most appropriate, given current EAV, projected growth for future EAV, future capital needs, future borrowing needs. So we always want to make sure that we have that discussion. And as I mentioned, you know, one of those discussions that was always a part of that for the last several years was the tech fund.
So just as we looked at... Tom, before we go into that, I just want to make sure three points are made here, I guess. You know, one is that the BABS savings or the four point eight million is over ten years to taxpayers. That doesn't reduce our bonded indebtedness.
Correct, yeah, whenever, just like we talked about earlier, you're refinancing one bond for another, it doesn't change the amount of bonds outstanding, but it changes the amount paid over time, that's right.
And the amount of, since we're not, you know, the abatement issue takes four hundred and thirteen thousand, five hundred and twenty dollars out of the operating budget, which I would recommend we do.
So that was just the next year's subsidy payment that affected the operating budget that Dale was referencing, four hundred thousand. So, you know, originally, as part of the discussion, just to, again, frame our discussion, we just continued with the thought process of what if we did consider the previous idea of issuing eleven million dollars of new debt? How would that affect, what are the many ways that we could choose to affect the overall debt payment? And there's two main discussion points that we have in there, and we'll look at some graphs in a moment. But one, you know, what is that amount, you know, those project dollars? What are those going towards? So what is the need? So we want to match up the need as compared to the comfort level of where that future bond and interest levy rate is. So we've taken a look at the potential for eleven million. That could obviously be zero. It could be all the way up to the twenty million that you have available. But if we look at adding any kind of new debt into the picture, that obviously changes the way that we structure the refinancing. So we wanted to sort of give you an option to begin that discussion point. So we've, and often what occurs there is when we have existing debt in a current payment stream, we would look at refinancing and remolding that existing payment through the refinancing and making room for the new payments in the most efficient manner possible. And so sometimes that means utilizing some of those savings that would have occurred and utilize some of those to push the existing debt out to make room for new debt. So that's essentially what we've modeled here.
Where'd you get that eleven million? Why not twelve, why not ten?
That was just the original figure that we had from our discussion last winter. Came up as sort of the needed amount, yeah.
What's needed is kind of a relative term. And so currently, in the tech fund, on the taxable side of the tech fund, we have seven point six million remaining. And on the tax exempt side, we have a little under four million. So eleven million, say, you know, five hundred and eighty-eight thousand is roughly, is, you know, kind of the... So at the current rate of about five million, that was what we use in the tech fund, you see how many years we have left. And so, you know, if you're going through all this bonding, you know, strategy in terms of all the effort you have to go through to do this, the question is then, do you, do you add anything to that or not? If so, what? So it could be any number, you know. If we make a November payment of five million, theoretically, you could do this without actually raising the bonded indebtedness at all because you'd put another five million in. So it could be five million, and you wouldn't raise our bonded indebtedness at all, but it would give you another year or find other ways of doing this.
So I think that was where it originally came from, was probably the equation of what is currently on hand, what is used per year, and then looking at the schedule that we produced. When would be the next time, you know, what would we need today to get us through until the next opportunity became available? So I think that's why the, you know, strange number of eleven million because it fit into the, it was backed into having seven million on hand plus eleven million equals eighteen utilized over, I think, four years is sort of the production of where that figure came from. But as Dale said, you know, it's really what the current need is for whatever the timeline is decided to be. So when we start to...
Tom?
Yes?
Before you move on, if I could just add in that breakdown of money, I think it's important to know as you think through this that there's four million dollars of that eleven that can only be spent on capital items. It cannot be spent on such things as software, people. So when we're, in my mind, when I'm looking at what do we have left, we by far, it's the seven more so because we can use the four million to buy simulators, but we can't use it for people and software.
What's the benefit of calling it tech funds? Is it just a marketing thing, or why not just say operating funds?
Well, it's restricted for technology.
It's in the operating fund, but it's restricted for tech or tech-related software and people.
It's just to keep a handle on it so it's not used for all different things?
It's really restrictive of that purpose.
Who restrict it though? The college restricted it, right?
When you sell the bonds, you have to tell them what it's for.
Right.
And so...
Right, it was the designation that was used.
Angelie probably has the best...
Yeah, typically, when we authorize the bond issue, as Dale mentioned, we do have to describe a specific purpose for what the proceeds will be used for. Typically, in the past, we do provide for kind of a broad authorization in case there are leftover monies, for example, that the district wanted to repurpose for another use. So from a legal perspective, we do usually authorize that the funds be used for general community college purposes, including but not limited to the tech fund, with the understanding that the intent is to use the money for the tech funds, and we make sure that, especially for the bonds that are issued on a tax-exempt basis, that the expected use of those proceeds on the tech fund will meet the tax-exempt rules. But from an authorization perspective, from a state law purpose, we do usually include a broader authorization for which to use the bond proceeds.
An investor wouldn't care what it's used for. I mean, is it just so that the college is limited in how they can spend the money? Or why would investor care if it's used for tech or anything else?
An investor wouldn't care. The only, the only time that they might care about it is really from a tax-exempt or taxable perspective. So for bonds that are issued on a tax-exempt basis, we would want to make sure that those bond proceeds are used for capital projects as opposed to salaries or operating expenses or something with a short useful life, such as software. But that is really the only reason why an investor would really care what the bond proceeds were used for, essentially just to make sure that the bonds were being used for a proper tax-exempt purpose.
Is there, is there an interest rate benefit to having it being taxable versus tax-exempt? I mean, or is it just pretty much balanced out between, you know?
No, there, yeah, there's definitely, I say significant, it's around point six percent, so the difference of a three and a three point six, that's kind of the number I'm comparing.
Which is why we split it and...
Right, so at the time, at the original last issuance, it was, you know, a detailed comparison of what would be used for operational or anything. You know, I mean, the, once it's deemed taxable, essentially, the IRS leaves you alone. But if it's deemed as tax-exempt at that tax-advantaged, lower interest rate, then it must be used on capital, physical purposes, not on salaries and budget. And so that's why that particular designation was made. So moving on to pages six, seven, yes?
Before we leave that page, I think it's like on page, well, looks like page three. It would apply to all one, two, and three. It says that on footnote number two, an A, A underlying, right? I think we saw in the auto report that our rating is actually standing fourth, gives us an A minus. How much of an interest rate, any idea what the interest rate differential would be between those two ratings?
Yeah, so roughly, when you're talking about basis points, there's about a ten basis point differential for each notch.
Oh, that's all?
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
And that was probably used because regardless nowadays, this was definitely the case several years ago, but it's kind of come back into fashion. Regardless of the underlying rating of the district, we would always utilize bond insurance, so we can simply purchase a higher rating for you. And even though there's a cost to doing that... doing that, that benefit of the lower interest rate well exceeds, it's usually more than double the benefit, so it's well more of a net gain to purchase that higher rating to achieve those lower interest rates. So that's, that's why that was, that was seen there. That's the rating that the insurance purchases for you. So pages, the appendix, pages six, seven, and eight, the nice graphics there. Again, this is just one, this is three, looks at a myriad of different ways that we could shape and affect the debt going forward. So the first two examples are just the refinancings alone.
It's page seven, eight, nine.
You skipped your fee page.
Oh, if you, we can, we can go over the fees if you'd like, yeah.
No, no, I'm just teasing.
So appendix, page six, seven, eight, start with the heading example levy level savings. So what we're doing through here is we'll step through from left to right. So of course, all of this revenue is derived on the left-hand side off of your EAV, your equalized assessed value, and we're applying a tax rate, a levy rate, to that assessed value to create revenue to pay your debt. So for example, in this page, starting just above the line where it says 2018, on the far left-hand side, moving across, we see the EAV of 4.1 billion. We see the total current debt service as it stands today for that annual year's levy of 11.2 million. That equates to a tax rate of 26.8 cents. So this summer, the taxpayers saw a bond and interest levy rate of 26.8 cents to pay that one year's debt service. If we were to consider a refinancing of the bonds that we talked about, 2010 B.C. and 2012, the column labeled refunded debt service, that would be the payments we would remove from the existing schedule. That would of course then leave the next column, the unrefunded debt service that would be paid on the bonds that we're not considering refinancing. Then we would look at how we would couple in the new bonds to replace those ones that were refinanced. So the two columns, both labeled refunding debt service, are referring to the BABS and then the 2012, so that's our, our new debt to replace that old debt. And what we've done there is we've compared the pink column on the left, which is the future stream of repayment, and we've essentially just decreased it in every year. So we've called that a level saving. So the savings in each year is effectively the same. So as you can see, when comparing the red and the blue columns, they're only different by the fact that the blue column is slightly smaller in each year. That's sort of the most basic form of a refinancing. It only takes advantage of the interest rate portion of our flexibility. It does not utilize any of the flexibility to rearrange or restructure debt. Conversely, on the next page, appendix, page seven, we've considered the possibility of accelerating those payments. Because the taxpayers saw a payment of 26.8 cents this summer and without any change, because we had planned for a new issuance of additional debt this year, we left room to make that available without a tax rate increase. And if we were not to incorporate that new debt, we'd have the opportunity to pay off some of the existing debt faster. So we've accelerated the payments on the existing debt. So that produces a blue column that has a faster repayment, and it, in this case, this was just one example of endless examples that we could do, we've chosen to keep that debt payment below the line, again, at 26.8 cents for the bond and interest rate for four years, essentially stabilizing that bond rate until we have another flex point and consider either another refinancing or addressing another capital issue. And again, I just want to emphasize, these are just examples to give you a framework to consider what you think is best to do going forward.
And Tom could model other examples.
So on page six, are you saying the 11 million is not in there? That doesn't assume we're going to have the 11 million in new money?
That's exactly right. Pages six and seven-
Seven, two.
Are just the idea of a refinancing, just-
Okay, and the, but the difference between the two is how fast we're paying it off?
Correct. If, since the original plan, you know, five years ago, was to have another new money issuance, and we left room for additional debt, if we didn't take advantage of that additional debt, it would be mathematically fiduciary, more fiscally responsible to pay off the existing debt faster. That's just one option to look at. Then, to your point, on appendix, page eight, we've considered what we looked at in the prior example of utilizing some of those savings to rearrange the debt, which essentially means pushing some of the existing debt out a little bit longer to provide again for a no-tax increase bond issue, in this case of 11 million dollars. So again, that sort of follows what the previous assumption, let's say, five years ago was that there would be an additional new money issuance today that would then again, as you'll see in the blue column below the line, keep the new tax rate still at 26.8 cents while incorporating, in this example, 11 million dollars of new debt. Obviously, what that does, if you were to compare the blue column in this page to the prior page, is it extends that total payment one year, and in those last years on the second page, that rate stays at 18 cents as opposed to where it dropped more quickly on the prior page. But as I said, this is just one of many examples.
So if we don't do the 11 million new money now, when is our next, I don't know, you had some term you call it?
Right.
Point of-
Right, flex point.
Flex point of, when is that? When do you see that? So we, we have 11 million left, basically saying we can only use some of it, 7 million for operating, so we could exist maybe a year and a half on the bond. Is that 7 million before this fiscal year or after?
The June, or the 7 million dollar balance is as of June 30, 19.
Okay. So I'm wondering if we could go till the next flex point and then issue, get new money, as you call it? When is that point? Is it too late?
Right, so there, so there's two ways to look at that. One, the next flex point in your existing debt is 2024. That's the next call date that occurs naturally in your existing debt. But just like we did several years ago, we can plan for a step down in the debt repayment schedule. So if you said, we want one year, let's keep the levy rate the same for one more year while we plan and discuss, but we know that there's going to be something, there's always something, we know there's going to be something, and we're going to figure out exactly what that is one year from now, then we could leave a drop in a year that would allow us to come in and fit in that next puzzle piece. So we could build in that point with a drop in the levy that could be filled in with new debt. We could create that drop in one year, we could create it to occur in two years and three years. We would essentially pre-model, we would provide to you a model of what that next piece would look like, and then we would just remove it. And then when it was time, we would know exactly how it fit back into place.
So what, what advantage would there be doing it now as opposed to later then? I mean, why wouldn't you want to wait and not pay interest on the 11 million for a year?
Right, so the original, the original theory was because, well, first of all, it was sort of coincidental that the, the call date, because you have to remember, five years ago, we weren't as worried about advanced refinancings. That just happens now, we're even more focused on that current call date. But it was sort of a coincidence that the call date aligned with the, the next new money borrowing. But when we, you know, originally sort of discussed the next phase, you know, a year ago, getting ready for this cycle of activity, it included the new money and the refinancing at the same time because there are overhead costs, there is efficiencies of scale, you know, and that could be realized, to your point, there's obviously a break even. If you know you have an issuance today and an issuance tomorrow, well, put those together, you get an efficiency of scale. If you know you have an issuance today and you may have an issuance in a year or two years, well, maybe that doesn't make sense because of your point. So it just happened that we were able to align both the need and the refinancing at the same time. Now, unfortunately, you know, as we discussed in April, we talked a little bit about timeline, and the timeline for the new money is a two-part issuance. There's an issuance of an alternate revenue bond and then the permanent funding source, which is called a funding bond. So because of that, there's essentially a five-month timeline to get through all of the, you know, state law requirements to do that. And so I think when we, we spoke previously, it was sort of the thought process that maybe we would start that in August and then prepare to finalize by that January, February timeline. Because we stand, you know, where we do today, unless the board, which, you know, we could try to do, but because there are certain hurdles that we have to overcome by issuing the first set of bonds that are replaced by the second set of permanent bonds, and those have their own individual timelines, unless the board were to do some special meetings and that sort of thing, which is possible, we may be too late in the process to have that done by the timeline of March 1. So even though you set your levy in December every year, the county clerk by state law is mandated to accept bond activity up until March 1. So we actually have until March 1 to affect the 2019 levy, which you'll be setting in December. But, so we could definitely complete the refinancing before that March 1 deadline and start that piece of the puzzle. But if there were a second piece of the puzzle, to your point, it, it could make sense to, to wait until whether it's the spring or next spring or whatever that timeline is because we probably can't create that, you know, we could probably on one of the issues, but not necessarily on all, all three at this time.
You said there are two parts, one was alternate revenue source, and what was the other thing?
Right, so, so timeline, I'll just knock the refinancing out of the way because that's very simple. In a refinancing, the only board action that is required is actually at the end of the process. You would give us an informal direction to go forth and bring us back a bond issue, and that's an informal direction. We would take that direction and we would take probably, you know, two to three months and create the marketing document and eventually go get the bond sold. And then on that day of sale, which we would align with your board meeting in probably January or February, we would simply bring to you, here's the final bond that you asked us to provide, is this acceptable to our discussions? And then you would sign off on that bond sale. So with the refinancing, there's only one board activity at the end of the bond issue. Obviously, there's a lead time to that, but that's the only formal activity. Then when we start talking about the funding bonds, funding bonds, and this is where Angelique is ready to go, funding bonds are used to pay an existing claim of the district. And in order to create that claim, we issue alternate revenue bonds. So the process is similar for both activities. First, with the alternate revenue bonds, the board would approve what's called a resolution of intent. And that resolution of intent simply states to the public the potential to issue new bonds. And you state an amount, a not to exceed amount. That resolution is then published in the paper. The publication in the paper then starts a 30-day petition period. During that 30-day petition period, the public has the opportunity to collect signatures of 7.5 percent of the registered voters. And if those petitions are not collected in that 30 days, the board has legal authorization to issue those bonds. So we would then finalize a BINA hearing, much like your levy hearing, it's a Bond Issue Notification Act hearing. You would allow the public to comment, but after that 30-day petition period, it'd only be a comment period. Then we would actually bring you that completed sale of the alternate revenue bonds. Upon the completion of that alternate revenue bond, that would give us the opportunity to then consider funding bonds. Alternate revenue bonds are paid, again, like we talked about earlier, from an alternate revenue source. And we don't, we wouldn't have direct access initially to the bond and interest levy, and that's what we're talking about in the blue column, the bond and interest levy. So the funding bonds give us the opportunity to replace that alternate revenue bond with a bond and interest levy supported debt instrument. So the funding bonds are ultimately your final bond issue that you live with. They would also follow the same timeline. After we finish the first timeline of resolution of intent, 30-day petition period, BINA hearing, board approval of the first bond, we would then begin the process again. And we would have a 30-day petition period for the funding bonds, a BINA hearing for the funding bonds, and then a final sale of the funding bonds. And that would complete the new money portion. So that's, that's why I said that process is obviously more complicated than just the refinancing process.
What if we wanted to let the voters decide whether we want to increase our debt?
What would be the most effective form that we would recommend for?
You could always put a bond question on the ballot at the next regularly scheduled election to issue bonds of a certain amount. So if you wanted directly to go to referendum to ask your electors, you know, shall we issue bonds in the amount of X to fund XYZ, you could certainly do that by your resolution of the board. And typically, the timeline to do that is about three or four months prior to the election date. So if you wanted to put a question on the March 2020 ballot, the board would have to pass an election resolution by the end of December. So that is certainly an option if you wanted to directly go to your taxpayers and your electors. And in that instance, it would be a majority vote of, of your electors needed to pass the question to give you authority to issue those types of bonds.
Angelique, on the funding bonds, were you, you know, the 30-day petition? So if the voters do get the signatures, then that's required to go on the ballot or you have to withdraw it?
That is correct.
And, and if, you know, just assuming for a moment that we would go through that process, what in your mind would be our X- what in your mind would be our XYZ, I think you call it XYZ need for funding, what would that be?
It would be up to the board and the district to describe the projects, and you could do so in a very broad manner and say, you know, build and equip school facilities, for example, or you could be very specific in the ballot question and say, to fund our technology needs. And so it's really up to you when drafting, and of course, you know, your bond counsel would help you draft the question, but it would really be up to you to decide what the purpose of the bond issue would be stated and how that would be stated in the question. Obviously, how it's stated would restrict your use of funds. So if you wanted broad flexibility, we would use broad language in the question. If you wanted to restrict the use of those bond proceeds only to technology projects, then we would craft the ballot question to only authorize that the bond proceeds be used for technology projects.
Well, so just in summary, we just wanted to give you an understanding of where we stood today, what options you have available, the facts of the cases we stand today with the potential for good, good savings, interest rate and otherwise, and then definitely to incorporate the discussion of what the future needs and requirements are to utilize all those opportunities to craft the correct, right-sized future of your debt payments.
You talked about pulling the puzzle out, the part eleven million dollars.
Yes.
And then you insert it in one year, whatever. Can you pull it out and hold it for five years or ten years, or is there a limit on that?
Right, so it would, it's really just putting a plan in place. So, you know, with your direction, we would, if you told us that you wanted to borrow, you wanted the opportunity to borrow X amount in one year or two years or three years, then we would create a plan that satisfies that. If you said the plan today is to refinance and to put in a puzzle piece in one year for five million, but you came back in a year and said, well, we want that five million to be ten million, we can of course do that, but it may cost more because it violated the original plan. Doesn't mean we couldn't do that for you, it just wouldn't be fitting in the perfect puzzle piece. And the opposite would be true, that if you told us to create a puzzle piece that's removable that would come in in one year, but in fact, it didn't come in for two years, that could create an uncomfortable dip in the levy so that you would have a decrease in the levy and then an increase in the levy, which, you know, just doesn't, doesn't sort of form with the typical stability of what we're trying to achieve for the tax rate payer, just stability. So it's not, again, that it's not at all doable, it's definitely doable to take that puzzle piece and delay it, but you run the risk of, you know, leaving a hole that you didn't fill. Again, we could fill that hole to provide you with that stability for a year, but that would come at a cost as well, and we want to minimize any kind of those inefficiencies. So our goal for you is always to craft the perfect plan, but as we know, there's no such thing as perfection, so we, we try to create the best plan we can that fits your best vision, and then we, and that's exactly what we're doing here today, is we had a puzzle piece planned for this time, and now we're deciding how that puzzle piece fits in.
And if we decided to have a puzzle in there and then pull it out, what happens if we said we don't need that and we're not going to utilize, you know, three million, whatever the number is?
Yes, yeah, so if we were to create a decrease in the levy in a year or two years, and then we didn't fill in that levy, there would be a decrease in the levy rate.
So, you know, just looking at our total debt number that, you know, shows up in the audit report.
Yeah.
How, you probably have that scheduled in here somewhere, but, I mean, how much is that going down every year?
Yeah, so we-
But say no other new debt is issued, just leave out the eleven million.
Right, so I think we looked at over the next ten years, approximately eighty percent of the principal is repaid over the next ten years. And, you know, just sort of inadtotally, as we heard earlier, you know, the current year's payment was, I think, more than six million, and just this November, we're paying five million, so there's lots of ways you can slice and dice that. But, so I don't, I don't have the exact cumulative payoff, but those are some hopefully helpful figures to address that question.
So I'm just thinking in my head, you know, if we did the, how much new money can we do and still have the total debt continue to decline?
Right, so-
So if we do the eleven million, does the debt state, debt total stay the same?
Right, right, so as of today compared to almost tomorrow, you know, a week, ten days from today, or we could say this year, this year, we've paid off, I think it was, was it six million, if you remember at all?
Six million.
So comparing this, you know, year, if you were to issue, let's say, that five or six million, whatever that exact number is, comparing audit year last year to audit year next year, that would be about five or six million that you could issue and the outstanding debt would stay the same. So we could just match that payment. Eight point three is what Kevin said, so. So that would be a no change to the outstanding debt.
And that would just be next year, year after that, though?
Then it would go down.
It should see just continued decrease.
Correct, yeah, decrease presumably about that eight, eight million per year.
Until, I guess you could say, five years from now when we need more tech money.
Correct.
And so if we don't issue any other debt for any other projects, like building buildings or whatever, we should be good.
Then it wouldn't change, that's correct.
That makes sense?
Right.
The debt should go down except for this, this type of issuance, if we can't find money anywhere else for tech funds.
That's correct, that's correct.
And Julie, page twelve of the board book, I actually have a schedule, just a one snapshot of the principal payments as to when they occur, and across, it's tiny, but it's there. We've got a lot of columns. And I do want to mention, and you know, like everyone, you know, I don't, I don't like debt either, I pay the debt. I do think there, it's important that we remember that we are a tax-supported entity. And whatever decisions are made in the reduction of a tax, what is disturbing not only to us but to taxpayers as well as when the rate does this. So I think whatever decisions that we make individually or together, we need to be sure that they're sustainable. What we, what we do, that once we let that rate drop, that we're really going to be able to stay around that same rate, that's just a concern I have.
And your comment, Julie, is correct, and that would include not issuing any life safety bonds either, you know, that would be in that mix also.
So what are those typically used for, and do you, was that part of the long-term plan to continue to issue life safety bonds?
Well, given the age of the campuses that we have, and particularly this one, you know, there are constant life safety issues that we deal with, you know, and so they're likely to happen sometime, and so that's, you know, I just want to point that out.
And that's something that if there, again, is an estimate, we can try our best to incorporate that and provide what that would look like to you so that you could, you know, we want as much information in the soup as possible to give you the best projection. It's never going to be perfect, but we want to try, and so we would try to incorporate that information.
Yes, I don't like the thought of issuing more debt, you know, we want debt to go down, but if we get past this hump and still have debt decrease, and then after this year it continues to drop, you know, I know we can't just erase it all, we have to func, the college has to function, we have to have money to pay for things, but at the same time, then I'd hope we find savings in the budget and so forth.
This will be taken either way, but the other consideration that Mary might be referring to is that, you know, our rate, if it does go down severely for all the right reasons, and tax caps do come along, which they may happen, that's where you're capped at.
What cap?
That's where you're capped at, where your rate is at the time the cap comes. So that's another reason to give that a consideration.
I'm just going to ask us, I don't know if you know this or not, but are you familiar with these reports, like the-
Yes.
Yeah, so each one of these bonds we're talking about is a line on here, right?
Right.
And so as the principal decreases, those lines go down, right?
The, well, yes.
Or what we owe, what we owe.
They don't go down until we get the bond paid off, right?
It depends on the payment schedule.
Right, so, you know, when you, I apologize for not having one, but, you know, we could, I could easily send you this, but when we look at your debt, we take each, each column we look at is, you can sort of imagine, each column we have here, these are only principal, but that of course includes interest as well. We take each one of these columns and we look at them side by side, and then we total across each one of those rows. So maybe today, we're paying more principal on the first issue, but interest on the last issue. So as we move through time, eventually, those older bonds will be paid off and they'll fall off and go away. But that's our job, is to schedule bond number two, bond number three, bond number nine, to all fall in line, so as one dies, the next one just smoothly feathers in. But along that way, as you noted, we're paying off principal at a clip of eight million a year, basically every year.
Also, the labels on here too didn't make sense to me, like it says zero zero three A bond, number thirteen dash one.
It's probably a resolution number, counties do that differently.
Yeah, I know, I tried to-
They're of no use to me.
Yeah, I tried to tie these lines to our bond issuances and-
Right, I matched the amounts to my schedule.
Yeah.
Yeah, we have, right, we obviously, we have schedules to, Mary, make sure that every year they're right, you know, but, yeah.
Right, I just wanted to make sure that I understood what, how this works.
Sure.
Other questions, Tom? Angelie, thank you.
Well, thank you very much, really appreciate the opportunity to discuss, and, you know, again, as Dale said, it's our job to provide you with information, and then we bring back the information via future schedules, so whatever would be helpful for you to see, we'd be happy to provide that.
You know, we didn't talk about your fees, I mean, your fees are competitive.
Yeah, so, yeah, so typically, when you talk about a bond issue, you're looking at sort of the industry standard of about two percent of that amount borrowed is paid out towards professional fees. On, obviously, that is somewhat variable depending on the size of the issue. So previously, or typically, half of that is usually towards the underwriter, our role, and the other half is for the other participants, the other professionals, whether it be lawyers who are your bond counsel, underwriters' counsel, local counsel, if there's a verification agent, if there's an escrow agent, a paying agent, so those types of professional fees. So on a larger issue, we come down pretty quickly from the total cost around two percent to probably around one point five percent, because it's a larger issue, it's more efficient. Therefore, our fee has come down, so as you noted there, we kind of gave you an estimate. So in there, I think we were only point seven percent of that, of that total amount for us, but you can see how that folds in to that overall cost. And that's about thirty percent below sort of the, one way of looking at the national standard of that one percent, the industry standard of that one percent sort of amount.
I see you got bond insurance on that list too, you talked about that.
Right, exactly. Thank you very much.
Any other questions? If not, thank you.
I had a couple, a couple things, not other questions exactly, but let's see, I'm assuming this would be considered, this is a negotiated offering, that's the kind of the term, the industry term, right?
That's correct.
Okay. And, no, the other, the form of compensation is kind of behind the scenes, I don't know if you saw the article in the Wall Street Journal?
Yes, I, yes, I'd be happy to discuss that.
Yeah, could you talk about that a little bit, maybe kind of explain to everybody what-
Sure.
-the article's talking about, and how does Stiefel handle that-
Right.
-that issue?
Right. So there's two things, one, in general, an underwriter, which is our role, is paid through a flat fee, as transparently disclosed. There is always the concern, and then of course, occasionally, there's the taking advantage of the fact that there's other ways to gain financially from the sale of bonds. The article specifically that was referenced talks about, there have been some, and I will clearly say bad actors, who have taken advan-
Piper Jaffray?
Well, there's a reason I'm happy to work at Stiefel. We, there are some folks that have additional, whether it's formal arrangements or informal arrangements, that when they sell a bond off, it may not necessarily be at the market rate. Rates fluctuate minute to minute, day to day, so it's understandable that a bond changes its value from day one when it's sold to day two. The article that you referenced specifically highlights the fact that there were inter-hour trades that occurred, there were markups that were done. Again, there are rare instances where that's a valid activity, someone decides they made the wrong purchase, their boss told them they shouldn't have done that, but I think with the frequency with which we saw highlighted in that article showed that there are occasions where it's a concerted effort, and there are gains that are taken advantage of through that market activity. I can assure you, I was previously on our trading, well, on our previous firm's trading desk, I was previously a trader, a bond trader. We are very cognizant of not, of trying to avoid those types of participants and players. We do not have any arrangements. I think specifically, you'll see in that article, it talked about there was one particular purchaser who was gaming the system. In particular, that was probably the biggest participant in that overall activity among some others. We do not deal with them, we do not have any of those types of arrangements. We, you know, not only hold ourselves to the highest possible standard, but we know that you will and should as well, and so therefore, we are extremely transparent with all of that. And so we have no intention to gain monetarily from our secondary trading or the trading of those bonds. So our only form of revenue is that which is stated, and there's none of that that occurs on our issues. We do not, now, if, if in a scenario where we end up holding some of the issuance, which can be a good thing for the district, which I'd be happy to describe, and the market were to move up or down the next day on some of those bonds we hold, we're willing to take that risk, because when we promise you, when we come to you with that board meeting and we've solidified a rate, maybe we've sold eighty percent of those bonds, maybe only seventy, maybe ninety, but whatever that differential is, we're stepping up as your underwriter to set those rates that we feel are the best that day. If we've put some of our capital at risk, fifty percent of the time, we do have a gain on that because the market moves, fifty percent of the time, we have a loss. That is purely an offsetting function of the market, it is not our intention, we have, because we don't know what the market's going to do, we don't get any renumeration, you know, from that, other than what the- know, from that, other than what the market provides. So we're very cognizant of that kind of activity and do not participate in any of that to generate revenue. So I apologize for taking up so much time, but it does, it's something that's obviously close to our heart, because it represents how we deal with our customers, and that's obviously how I live, is by fair dealing with my customers. So thank you for the question and the time.
Yes, thank you for your explanations and time here, all of you, we appreciate that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are we ready to move on now to D, budget requirements?
Mary's going to take us through, the timing on the budget typically would be, you know, beginning in January, so, you know, for the spring, but we want to give you an idea where we thought that was going, given the, you know, the, how this fits into the overall picture.
Okay, so what I'm looking at's page thirty-six and thirty-seven of your, of your budget book, or your...
The board book.
Board book for tonight. And basically, this was included just as a summary of how we project and plan, and what some of the decisions that we'll be talking about over the next couple of months affect the sheets in how we come out at the end of the fiscal year. So you will notice, when you look at the projections, that we have removed the federal revenue source of the BABS rebates from the 2021 budget. We are planning for...
It said four thirty-five figure there?
Right, it's zero in the column on twenty twenty-one. We're going to be talking about a tuition increase in a few moments, and the, these numbers here are budgeted on a seventy-three thousand credit hour, credit hours issued. And what I want to mostly, the main thing to draw your attention to is towards the bottom, where we talk about fund balances, and this is what Kevin alluded to earlier, that those had started to climb slowly, beyond the fifteen million in bonds that were issued a few years ago. We are hoping, you know, and again, this, this is built on so many estimates, as all of you understand, I know, but we're hoping that we have an increase in our fund balance again at the end of fiscal year 2020, and with the assumptions that we've built in an intuition increase and a certain level of tax revenue, we're hoping that we would be looking at about a $200,000 increase again in 2021. So our budget assumptions are that we will end both years, again, moving in the right direction. Page thirty-seven is just another reference on our main revenue sources. You can see what local government taxes are bringing in each year, nineteen ninety-three forward. Again, state monies, you can see the drop in two thousand and sixteen, and how that has started to increase again. Federal government, BAB dollars there, and then our tuition and fee revenue. And the bottom is the breakdown in instruction academic support, student services, going across, and how our money's been spent. So with that, I would like to move on to E, if I could, and talk about tuition and fees. Generally, we, at this time of year, we are looking at what we anticipate we will need, because we will be bringing a recommendation forward in December and ask for, as an information item, and ask for your approval on that in January, but our planning included a five-dollar increase in tuition. And what that means in dollars, and for my purposes, when I calculated, I used our fiscal year nineteen credit hours of approximately seventy-one five. So that's an increase in revenue of three hundred and fifty-seven thousand, five hundred dollars approximately.
A couple of comments is that April and I will talk to the student council and get their input between that December-January board action, they'll come back to you, their reflections on that. And currently, our, we're at a hundred and twenty-five dollars per credit hour. If you take a, if you take a full-time load, say thirty hours in academic year, that's thirty-seven, three thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars to be a full-time student and graduate on time, this change would make it, so thirty-seven fifty would be thirty-nine hundred for thirty hours. And it would, it would go into effect in the academic year fall of twenty, and apply to spring of twenty-one.
And I'm not sure, Dale, if you said this, and I missed it, but we did not increase tuition the past year.
Right.
Along with that...
Sorry, I was going to mention, we're right at the state average now, and would remain at about the state average.
Along with that, we are looking at proposing a five-dollar increase in athletic fees. Again, it would return the same three hundred and fifty-seven five. That is important this year, we haven't raised athletic fees for several years, the last was in fiscal year sixteen, and we raised it by three dollars. But that's important, because we work with, within the auxiliary fund, to balance and cover any athletic shortfalls that may exist. So we have our bookstore commissions, and we have our vending commissions that we put towards our athletic program. Well, as the expenses within the athletic program also continue to grow, and as our retention is keeping our students in, in receiving scholarships longer, we are looking at a need to increase the revenue that is flowing into athletics, in order to keep the athletic program functioning within its auxiliary fund.
Do you have, I'm sure you do, could the board have a printout of the cost of each athletic program? You know, you have scholarships, you have coaches, you have, you know, travel, you have various costs, and I, I just, it'd be interesting to see what the costs are per program, so that we know what, and then we could get the total cost of the athletic program to, you know, and where, what revenue you use from other sources to pay for that. Dr. Chapman said that it's a kind of a, balances out, you get enough income to take care of the athletic program. I'd just like to see the cost of that, if, I assume you have that?
Sure.
Okay.
Sure.
It'd be nice if we could have that for the, could we have it for the next board meeting?
I can provide you with an athletics report sim, pretty easily. What I don't have is the breakdown by sport.
Oh.
You know, I have travel for athletics, I don't have what soccer, what was spent on soccer, what was spent on baseball. I don't know how easily Dr. Sean Hill could provide that breakdown.
Sean?
Can you provide estimations?
Estimations, okay.
Can you submit something called, and when your report shows how much you spend on sports, show that you don't spend a, extremely not, low money on male athletes, female athletes, we have a sense overall based on who would make the money to, based on who's paying on equipment, and we're spending on officials, transportation, yields.
Okay, yeah, we'd appreciate that, if you could share that with us. Thank you.
We could get that for you, and the board doesn't have to make a decision on this for a couple of months now, but I just wanted to show you where we're headed with this. Just going to mention that all their institutional fees, like student activity fees at three dollars a credit hour, technology fees at four dollars, two dollars for green fees, all those stay the same. This is the only one we're proposing raising, is to keep it in balance.
So, it said, for students in, who are in the Pell, get Pell and MAP eligible, what percentage of the student body is that, do you know? I mean, like, just half, two-thirds?
Less than half.
Less than half? I just wondered...
Thirty-seven percent, something like that, you know?
Okay.
A third, full Pell, things like that, and then, you know, if you look at our total tuition fees at, at forty-four, hundred and forty dollars now, it's kind of a bargain, given the quality of the academic construction, and, and so, you know, for people that can afford it, that's, we have a lot of very wealthy people that come here, because they're smart consumers. And then, you know, the Pell grants cover, you know, a lot of costs, and MAP grants, middle-income students are the ones that affect the, see the increase the most, and, you know, we try to help them with scholarships and things, but, so that's kind of how that breaks out. So just to be clear on the, if you do the tuition fees, we're at forty-four forty right now, we'll be at forty-seven forty in fall of twenty-one. Our difference total.
I guess, you know, I compared our tuition and fees to our, to our peer group, not to the state average. We don't necessarily compare ourselves to Chicago, because, you know, that's why we have a peer group, and we're considerably higher than our peer group. They're at a hundred and fifteen dollars, I'm talking, just talking tuition, we're at a hundred and twenty-five now, and you want to go to a hundred and thirty. So we're talking about being eleven, we're already eleven percent higher than our peers. That's concerning to me. And we're, we're even higher than SWIC, SWIC is a hundred and, at a hundred and thirteen, they're even slightly lower than our peers, that's puzzling to me, but that's what it is. And on our, and our fee, and our fees, their fees are only nine dollars, and you're proposing twenty-eight dollars, I, I mean, it seems, kind of, just seems out of line to me. So, I might be, I'd like for you to look at that.
Be glad to look at that. You know, the SWIC district is twice as large, so the EAV that they're drawing down is, is twice the amount we are, so they're probably using taxes to subsidize some of this.
Isn't that made up far by the equalization from the state of Illinois, to, to a great extent?
I think, I think that their, I think that their, their EAV is significantly more, so they're doing it somehow, they have a strong athletic program over there, they do the same kind of recruiting that we do, they're paying for it somehow, so I'm, we're trying to pay for it without taxpayer money, I think they're paying for it some other way. I hear your point, we'll look at it.
Yeah, they're not doing it with taxpayer money either, because their tax rate is lower than ours.
Twice the EAV, so their rate can be lower than ours.
Yeah, but it's...
The rate can be lower.
On a per capita basis, I don't know if their EAV is that much higher than ours on a per capita basis.
Their total amount of money they bring in from their district is significantly more than ours.
Yeah, but these numbers are per capita, these are per capita numbers here, I don't...
Yeah.
I know, I know, it's complicated, I realize it's complicated.
We'll take a look at it. I think that the other issue has to do with the levies, and we want to go through that, Mary.
Sure. Okay, the first levy item I'd like to bring up is the special tax levy, and that is the, the one that we will be bringing forward at the next meeting, and I think that's the one that you alluded to just a few moments ago. The special tax levy is authorized by ICCB each year at their board meeting. Page forty to forty-three in your board book has, has all that paperwork, and it's provided for districts who are levying less than the combined ed and O and M tax rates, that are levying lower than the statewide average, so they have an opportunity to levy up to that average. In this particular year, we are four point oh five cents below the state average for ed and O and M funds. So ICCB has also authorized us to levy, with your permission, an additional amount. That equates to an estimated one point seven million dollars. And when we call this an additional tax levy, I think it's important to know that we levied the same last year, and the estimate this year is a couple thousand higher. So it's a special tax, but it's an ongoing special tax. We actually expected that the rate we would be authorized to levy at would be lower, so we actually budgeted one point four million for this levy year, and of course, remember that will be split between fiscal year twenty and fiscal year twenty-one. So at the next, at the next board meeting, I will be bringing forward a resolution asking that we consider this. What that is, involves then, is to put an ad in the paper, and provide an opportunity for residents to obtain a, a number of signatures on a petition to, to stop that additional Those are due, I believe I calculated it would be December seventh, that those would have to be turned in. Without a petition in its place, then I would include the four point oh five cents on the full levy that I will bring to you in December.
I always think that's funny, to give the voters an opportunity, that's, which is an, man of La Mancha, fighting the, fighting, impossible, almost for the voters to offset that. I would encourage our legislators to change that law, to give the voters an opportunity, if they didn't want an increase, you know, to challenge that, because virtually right now, it's impossible to challenge it, if the board decides to increase that rate. Thank you.
So, Mary, you know, on this schedule, I should marry with this thing from the, I guess it's from the county clerk?
Right.
So there, there is a line on here called operations and maintenance, or what, what line are we talking about on here?
Each county is different, I'm not sure which one you have, and without looking at it...
Madison.
Some of them put this additional levy on its own line.
There was one that's called additional ed and operations, that's what it would be.
That's what it would be.
So, you know, right now, it's listed as point oh four six two, well, that was, this is to, tax year two thousand eighteen.
Right, it was point, yeah, four point six two cents.
And we're wanting it to be what?
Well... It is set by the state, yes. We, last year's rate was four point one two, and this year, it's four point zero five.
Four point zero, so, okay.
Now, when we say that, we have to remember that we do not know what the EAV is, you know, so...
Yeah, so really, what, what we ask the, the county for is a dollar amount, right?
Not for this one, this one is rate.
Okay.
There, it is, there are certain funds where we ask for a dollar amount, such as the bond and interest.
Yeah, okay.
And then there are other funds, such as the ed fund, the O and M fund, this special tax, that it is a rate of the equalized, applied to the equalized assessed valuation.
So even with, even if you project that the assessed valuation's going to go up 2%, I don't know if you've considered that in your calculation?
This is, the estimate's from ICCB, it's not our estimate.
State says that.
They say 2%. So...
They provide the estimate, what this means for us.
So, even with that, we still need to increase our rate that we ask for, even though our assessed valuation's going to go up, we, we, we need to ask for more money?
If we do not pass this, that four point, whatever you're looking at there, becomes zero, it's a one-year authorization. So then we've lost one point four million dollars in revenue, we'll have to find from another source.
Or maybe as much as one point seven, we don't know at this point. But only, only seven hundred thousand's in the current budget.
What did we ask for last year? Maybe that'd be a better way to...
We asked for the full four point...
But what was the, the total dollar amount, do you know?
I do not know what the estimate was, I know that we received one million seven hundred and, seven hundred and eleven thousand, almost. That's why I said it's just up a couple thousand dollars.
Okay, I understand.
The estimate to the actual... The estimate to the actual.
So, I mean, it's not really a tax increase then, is it? I mean, because.
Exactly, right.
The total dollar amount we're asking for is theoretically going to be the same, assuming EAV increases two percent.
Well, what we don't know, I don't know that this has a levy increase in it, in their estimate. I would guess not, since they're so close to actual. That's what can be challenging in the levy is because we build the levy on, on a certain idea of what the EAV may be. So for instance, we were authorized to do four point one two cents in the last levy year. We undershot the levy increase, so what we actually received was four point oh four cents, which is why this estimate's just a tad bit higher at four point oh five cents. You know, so, you know, we can put it out there, but until the EAV is set and apply, our levy is applied to that, we don't know exactly.
Okay.
We are.
Well, you're page forty-three. That's already a done deal. That's already approved, right, for that?
Yes, it is, but just, you know.
You're right.
For transparency, we wanted to talk about the fact that there is a nickel levy for PHS purposes committed to this bond issue.
I think that leaves the, the district general levy.
Right. Oh, right. Again, I've touched on it already, but we have to turn in our levy to the county clerks by the last Tuesday in December. We levy in our ed and O and M funds the full twenty-five cents. We do fifteen cents for the education fund and ten cents for the O and M fund. And those are rates that were established by the board many, 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 many moons ago. That's been the rates the whole time I've been here. Depending on, what happens from that point depends on what our levy increase is. And as I'm, as I'm sure you all know, if we would increase our levy above a hundred and five percent of our actual levy for the two thousand and eighteen levy year, we would have to have a truth in taxation hearing. We call it going into the black box because there are certain advertisement requirements for the public hearing as far as what the perimeter of your ad, how thick the black line needs to be, what your, your type needs to be, where it needs to be placed in the paper. So that would be something we would, once we do the calculation, that we would need to talk about what those results are.
And then the rate that you put in there is not the rate you receive. The, you get what the rate really is. If you don't put it high, if it does come in more, you don't get it.
You know, once you're going into the black box, you might as well go in kicking and screaming at that point.
Right.
Right. So those are some of the main components.
I have a question. The, this backdoor referendum, the four point oh five, that, that, I mean, that does raise the tax rate to the taxpayer, does it not? Then how, how is it funded if it does not?
Because it already exists on the tax levy. It already exists now.
We think it'll be down a little bit from last year old. It's already in, it's already in the tax levy now.
So, so if we, if we would do this, then we, we actually don't get any additional funds, or do we not, do we?
About the same we got last year.
We would anticipate about the same, plus or minus any EAV adjustments.
If we didn't do it, Chuck, then it would go down.
So, so if we do this, it will not raise, it will not, not increase the taxpayer's responsibility?
It will, should not have a significant impact. I cannot answer that question to, with all certainty, because I do not know what the EAV adjustments are going to do.
I had on here, you know, just talk about the difference between the, the rate and EAV. And so to really answer that question in terms of dollar amount, we'd have to know what the EAV is going to be. And we don't know at this point, but.
And we won't know till next spring.
The rate won't change as a result of this, but the EAV may change and that may change the total.
There, there's, there's no way that the taxpayer can be responsible for any additional taxes if we don't do this? Or if we do this?
I don't know. I mean, the rate is roughly the same as it was last year. It'll only be a function of EAV.
Does it, does this not increase the tax rate by four point oh five?
Not the rate.
Not over where it currently is.
Julius, yeah.
So really, I mean, the only, when you, when you look at the schedule, the schedule really is, makes it clear for me. I don't know, goes to my accountant head or whatever, but I'm really, it's the bond issuances where we can save the taxpayers.
Exactly.
So.
That's, that's.
Because the money we're talking about here is used to run the college.
Right.
And until we lower the costs around the college, which I, you know, don't know how we're going to do that, the, these monies are, put a hole in our budget.
Right.
It's the, the bond issuances that make our taxes go up. And so we can just, you know, with his help, you know, just slowly bring that down.
Right.
Right. And you have to remember too, that some, some of the larger numbers of the later bond issues occurred during the, when we had to find other sources, when the state did its, those are not, some of those are not normal ongoing issuances.
This has been really helpful tonight. I really appreciate your attention.
I just had a few, a few questions about the schedule on page thirty-six. Let's see, one of this one's been answered. You're anticipating one and a half percent increase in property tax revenue, so I guess that just increase in the EAV.
That's a guess.
A guesstimate.
That's, that's all counties, by the way. It's not just Madison County. It's all our counties.
Well, right, right. But Madison County is the lion's share of it.
But the other counties do affect it.
Yeah. What, what was your assumption regarding tuition?
Five dollars a credit hour.
So you.
But this is actually a schedule that, that Nancy prepares. And I, I will point out to you, because I figured you would notice it, that she did her budgeting on seventy-three thousand credit hours. And the numbers I quoted you earlier were on seventy-one five.
So, so we're a little bit overstated on tuition then, huh?
Nancy's always been a little more optimistic.
Now, she has, this is, this is a snapshot of a much larger calculation. And so my numbers were done independently of hers.
Okay. And on the, what, what was the assumption on, on salaries?
Three percent, three percent.
Yeah, I saw, yeah, that's like, the three percent, how did you, how did you allow for the, the pending implementation of the new compensation system?
She probably has another third in there, you know? We have one ninety in there now, so could she, I mean, I don't know, I'm guessing that she would put about another third in there.
Because we weren't able to tell exactly where, what funds and what positions were going to be affected. My guess is her salary number does not include anything related to that. Because for the nineteen budget, right, and I can't say that she hasn't added that in. But for the nineteen budget, we had it in another category because we couldn't place it in salaries.
Okay. All right, so she just used three percent. I mean, we know that three percent is actually kind of, kind of built in, but we have some fluctuations in headcount, of course, so.
And if people come and go, that, that number is just, it's a guess.
And I think you, let's see, yeah, you, you said your, the enrollment assumption is, is, she assumes seventy-three thousand credit hours, it should be seventy-one five.
The numbers I quoted earlier were based on FY nineteen levels of seventy-one five.
It's, that's an estimate, as you know, and we'll see how it goes.
Now, is that, the number of credit hours, is that, is that trending downward? I mean, our enrollment's kind of more or less trending, has been trending downward. But yet your, our tuition has kind of been up and down a little bit, but mainly kind of trending downwards too. I'm kind of a little concerned about a budgeting an increase in tuition revenue, but.
It will be what it will be, right.
Yeah, you increase, of course, you increase the five dollars an hour. That would be one reason why it went up.
Right. And, you know, these numbers are based, and this is a bigger discussion too, but on billable credit hours. You know, as you've mentioned, the dual credit, you know, the, the dollars aren't there. We're still awarding credit hours, so our state calculation will include those, but our tuition revenue line will not.
But that's built in.
Right.
There, you know, I, I, I'm always confused about the, the tech fund. We show on a line item here for a tech fund revenue transfer in of two million dollars. But where's that coming from?
From the tech bond issue.
So the tech bond issue gets.
Those bonds have been issued. We already have the money.
Right.
Where is the money now? Is, is it industry and investments? It's just coming from investments?
It's in the restricted fund.
Restricted fund of investments, right?
Well, it is being invested, but this is the operating fund. So this is funds one and two. Restricted fund is fund six, not part of the operating budget.
No.
So when we transfer in money from the tech plan, that's why you see it as a revenue and transfer in.
And one further question on that, yeah, just one further question. On the state equalization, she has a nine point nine, almost ten percent increase there. Is that? Seems like, is that reasonable? It's a state apportionment base operation slash equalization.
It's both, both, both base operating and equalization together. Possibly. It may, may be too high. I mean, I.
It's a pretty, pretty good chunk of money there, five hundred thousand dollars.
You're correct.
Yeah. That bear's looking into.
Okay.
Again, this is just a projection. It's not, you know, it's not even a budget at this point.
So, you know, we were talking about what we're spending in tech funds. I mean, doesn't that, that two point two, is it, is that what we're saying we're going to spend out of the tech? But it just, just, I know it's just out of operations and education. Where's the other amount? Is that going to be spent on capital, capital stuff?
It's paid directly out of the restricted fund.
So like.
So it's a, it's a five million dollar?
It's included in the five million dollar number that we've given you.
Right. So what, what other, so that would, what would be the difference between the two? Like, are those capital purchases then, or what, why do some pass through the education, operation, building maintenance fund and the other does not?
Well, because it's always been that way. So I would love to have an answer to that myself. Through the years, from how it was passed to me and how it functions now, has changed somewhat through the years. It used to be that more regular type expenditures were in the ed fund and more non-routine expenditures were in the restricted fund. However, when we put in something like colleague, Lucian Live, and, and took on the, the costs of that, it really did change things and we shifted a little bit. There is a formula used to what I bring over from restricted to the, to the bill, to the ed fund. It covers basically certain cap, section of salaries there, as well as some of which are direct covered and some of which are indirect covered.
Okay.
It just depends.
I want to point out that I put a summary sheet in front of all of you that has kind of recommendations for you to consider. And we won't get into that tonight necessarily, but I, I wanted to declare myself on where I thought it might be helpful.
Any other questions? Certainly want to thank everyone for giving us all the information tonight, answering all the questions. That saved us three hours for our next board meeting, you know? Okay, if that is it, then we stand adjourned.